We discussed personnel matters and held interviews for boards and commissions. The first order of business we have today is a presentation by our EAC, Kurt.
Good evening. Thank you for your time this evening. I think they're going to bring up a presentation. There we go. It won't take a lot of your time, but don't hesitate to stop me if you have any questions. No? Okay. Doesn't want to do that.
If they put, did you put it up there? They must be controlling in the back. Can you go to the next slide?
Next slide. What I'm going to talk about tonight is a recommendation that we have with regard to an EV transition for the fleet of the township. If we can. Do I have it here?
Just pulling suspense.
There you go. All right. Now we're in business. Okay. So by way of background, of course, we're all concerned about the impact of climate change and the future. We're certainly seeing some hot weather today. The Board of Supervisors took a step in addressing this issue with its resolution. This was back in March of 2020 with a target of 100% clean renewable energy for all uses by 2050. And that's the context in which we've looked at this. In our modeling, transportation and mobile sources are responsible for almost 50% of the greenhouse gas emissions in the township. So this is a very salient sector for us to be looking at. A worldwide transition to EVs is already underway. EVs were 7.5% of registrations in the U.S. in April, but in 2023, they were 26% of the market in China and 87% in Norway. So this is happening not just here, but big time around the world, and the trend is accelerating. And of course, more EV models continue to come online. China alone has over 200 EV manufacturers at present. Battery electric vehicles have a number of advantages. They have much lower carbon emissions over their lifespan, and particularly if they're charged from a carbon-free electricity source. They're inherently more energy efficient. It's just a function of the physics of it. Modern EVs can travel 250 to 300 miles on the equivalent of 2.5 gallons of gasoline. The amount of energy contained in 2.5 gallons of gasoline in a battery can be 250 to 300 miles. They have a lower lifecycle cost. They have a little bit higher upfront cost right now, although that's coming down, but due to lower fuel and maintenance costs, they're lower cost over their lifecycle. And there are a number of incentives to reduce the cost of the units and also to reduce the cost of charging. They have far fewer moving parts, about 1/10th the number of moving parts in a traditional internal combustion car, and fewer parts that need regular maintenance. And of course, they can fuel up essentially anywhere there's a plug. Now, obviously, higher speed charging facilities are preferable, but literally any place there's a plug, they can fuel. They do have some limitations. Charging takes longer than filling a tank with gasoline, although high-speed charging gets faster every year and the cars get more capable of taking it. And there are a limited number of models available in the U.S. at present, so not every application has an EV that is suitable for that. The township operates a modest fleet of vehicles. It's a range of vehicles from passenger cars to more specialized vehicles such as the police vehicle or public works vehicles. All are currently internal combustion powered primarily by gasoline, although we do have six diesel vehicles in the medium and heavy duty category. And the annual miles driven by these vehicles is fairly low. None are above 18,000 miles a year, and the average is about 6,000 miles a year. So mileage is not a constraint. The light duty portion of the fleet, this is principally passenger cars, light trucks, and the like, are well positioned to be replaced by EVs pursuant to the normal replacement schedule. Their daily mileage, 25 miles a day, not more than 70, that allows for easy use of an EV without any concerns about range. Cars and light trucks currently available as direct replacements for EVs, including vehicles in police pursuit vehicle configuration. So there are opportunities to do that as well. We're not aware of dwell time issues. There may be an occasional dwell time issue. What I mean by that is there needs to be a certain amount of time for recharging of the vehicle. So if you had a vehicle that was literally used 24 hours a day, that would be unsuitable for that particular application, but I'm not aware of that configuration in the township. So what do we recommend? The EAC recommends that as a matter of policy, cars and light trucks scheduled for replacement should be replaced by EVs. Wilson Engineering, which is our consultants that the state has supplied to us, has identified five vehicles within the police fleet that are due for replacement in the next three years. There are two scheduled this year, two next year, and one the year beyond. The potential to accelerate the replacement of those vehicles exists to take advantage of some grant programs that currently exist, and we don't know whether they will exist in perpetuity, but they exist today. The AFIG Alternative Fuels Incentive Grant Program can provide up to $7,500 per vehicle. The Federal Commercial Clean Vehicle Program, $7,500 per vehicle. And then PICO has an EV Smart Program that can defray up to 50% of the cost of the charging infrastructure. So all of these things are out there right now, and Wilson Engineering is happy to help us configure our grant applications to get that done if we want to accelerate the replacement of those five vehicles. We also recommend investing in the charging facilities convenient to the various areas where the fleet vehicles park naturally and then take advantage of the incentives that are associated with that. And then continue to monitor developments in the market for the medium and heavy duty fleet. Right now, there are not direct replacements for those as they come up, but there's no question they will be as those markets mature. So we'll just need to keep monitoring that so that we can identify those opportunities when they come up. We believe that taking these steps will advance Doylestown Township toward the goals that you laid out back in March of 2020. Be happy to entertain any questions.
One question I had for you, Mr. Sawyer. In Middletown Township, they recently received several grants and funding to put Level 3 chargers on their premises. For those unaware, Level 3 chargers are the second fastest charger, really the fastest that you can reasonably afford right now. As far as like having, for police readiness and all that, is that something we can look into pursuing as well to offset the, any concerns about vehicles not being charged and ready to go?
Right. And this is the dwell time issue. And so, and I'm not deep enough into the weeds with the police department to know exactly how much sort of parking time each vehicle has. Obviously, they're not driving a lot of miles, so they don't need to charge every day, right? But they need enough dwell time in one place to charge up. And a Level 2 charger, which is what I have in my house, for example, if the car were completely depleted and you wanted to charge it up completely, it's probably about a 10-hour operation. Now, that's not the way people operate, right? They kind of plug it in each night and keep going. You're using it for 25 miles a day, doesn't take very long to charge it back up. The DC fast chargers can charge the modern cars from, let's say, 20% to 80% in less than 20 minutes. So again, this is a specific dwell time issue, and that's the one where we kind of need to drill down just a little bit to understand that specifically in order to get an intelligent answer to what exactly do you need to put in for charging facilities. I suspect that putting in enough Level 2 chargers like you would have in your garage would probably meet the needs because there's probably enough dwell time for sort of each vehicle in order to take its turn. But you know, that's a matter of how many do you need, depending on how many cars are parked at a time.
I have a couple of questions for you. As always, the EAC always comes with a beautiful presentation and thoughtful. You said you worked with Wilson Engineering?
Right.
Were they in touch at all with our police department to talk to them about what our needs are?
They got the list of vehicles from the township, and so that's the list that they were working off of.
Okay. But they have not spoken directly with the needs, how their shifts work, how their police cars are coming in and out, charging needs. For me, it comes down to safety.
Sure.
That's why I ask.
Right. And I don't believe that anybody has gotten
To that level.
Into the dwell time. That's the exact point that you're making, and I agree, that we need to understand specifically the dwell time on vehicles. You know, this is a fleet situation, so not every vehicle is deployed all at the same time every day, right?
And is there a reason why we wouldn't consider hybrid so that we'd have the, is there any reason why we would not consider hybrid?
Hybrid doesn't really buy you a lot. All hybrid does is get you slightly better gas mileage, but it doesn't get you the other advantages of an EV. An EV has much lower fueling and maintenance cost by virtue of you're only working with a battery and a few motor, a couple motors. When you go to hybrid, what you really have is you have two entire power plants. You have a gas engine, and then you have a motor run by a battery. So you've doubled down on the amount of paraphernalia, and you can't really get to the full advantage.
And here's my, and my other question is this. Well, two things. One is if there's an emergency and it's bad weather, will that draw down that battery faster, right? Because we may not be able to bring it in, that dwell time. Yes, I think that dwell time is going to determine a lot of things, but the weather, I think potentially could also impact.
Sure. But remember, the average mileage for those vehicles is 25 miles a day. They have
Well, I would love to see the data and the Wilson Engineering information. As I've always said to the EAC, if you could forward that to the board.
Sure.
That data, those data points that you bring are really helpful for us. That would be really important to me. The other piece is if we wanted to discard the vehicle after a certain period of time, what is the cost to do that? I know those batteries are a little bit of an issue.
Not really, because they are setting up to recycle all of those, and there are already a couple of plants operating in the United States. What was happening was is you had an initial wave of electric vehicles. They didn't yet have the density, and they weren't of sufficient age that they were casting off a lot of used batteries. In fact, life to date of all the battery electric vehicles that have been sold in the United States, less than 2% have had batteries replaced. So you weren't at a scale yet where it was feasible for somebody to make a business of recycling the batteries. There are now a couple of plants already operating that do exactly that. So there really isn't an issue with recycling the batteries?
Having that information would be helpful because if we needed to discard of a vehicle, we need to know if, what the cost, I'll look at the whole cost benefit of doing this. And it may make sense for some things and not for others within the township. So I appreciate you bringing it to light. And like I said, so the data, asking about the hybrid, the cold weather implications, and the charging time, I guess would be something that we'd need to further clarify. Thank you.
With regards to disposing of the vehicles too, we often put our vehicles up for auction, which is becoming more commonplace for electric vehicles. Hertz divested some of their Tesla fleet recently as well as others, so that's something we could also look into as well. Maybe not necessarily for our police vehicles, but for our more civilian-related work.
There's a robust secondary market for electric vehicles.
Sure. I'd be, I'm sure there, I just would like to see that data, that information helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Sawyer. I think you've been very, this has been very helpful for me personally. I don't seem to need any more information, what you've provided, and I trust the EAC going forward. You're going to have all the indicia to support this program. And I just thank you again for all the time and energy you put into making this information available to us.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I would like to thank you too for all the work you and the rest of the EAC do. You put a lot of research time into doing this, and I think EVs, I personally have an EV. I find them to be a very desirable car. I don't think that was even addressed in this. They're usually pretty nice, pretty well appropriated. And besides the police vehicles, there's also vehicles that we have across the township that could also be included and looked at in terms of electric vehicles. So I appreciate the research and the time that you're spending on doing this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do as well. And I, just to let everybody know, before we would move forward on this, we would make sure the police department has all of their concerns addressed. I know I spoke with the lieutenant at one point regarding EVs, and there are different things that maybe we might not think of because we don't have to sit in them all day. But this is really good information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is public comment, agenda items only. Any public comment? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to go on with announcements. The next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be held on Tuesday, August 20th, 2024, at 7 o'clock at night. The Thompson Performing Arts Series at CNN Amphitheater in Central Park continues bringing music to Central Park throughout the summer. This month's Capitol campaign focuses on the Comfort Cottage. Sign up for eNews at DoylestownPA.org for lineup of the weekly performers and parking information, and hopefully the weather will hold out for us for tomorrow.
Beatles Tribute Band.
Beatles Tribute Band.
Tomorrow, 7 o'clock.
Rain date, Friday. Movie in the Park tickets available for purchase at the administrative office. Oh, movie in park tickets, I'm sorry. Available for purchase at the administrative office. Tickets and prices can be found at DoylestownPA.org or by calling 215-348-9915. National Night Out, that's going to be August 6th between 4:00 and 8:00 p.m. at Central Park. It's a free community event. It's so much fun. Mark your calendar. You don't want to miss the family fun event. It's sponsored by our Doylestown Township Police. Keep up to date with township eNews, township news with our e-newsletter. Again, you can sign up for that at DoylestownPA.org. It's sent out every Friday at 4:00 p.m. It's brief and educational, and it's a really good thing to have. Next on the agenda is minutes approval. Has everybody had an opportunity to read the budget work session minutes?
Are you looking for approval for the budget work session?
Yes, please.
Yes. So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
And Barbara, Dan? All in favor?
Aye.
And then the regular meeting minutes?
Make a motion to approve?
And I'll second, but I have a, I messed up. I abstained on the, what do you call it, the Human Relations Commission vote.
Okay.
But I nonetheless inadvertently signed the resolution.
We have another copy for tonight.
Okay, so
To re-sign.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to make it noted, so I don't need to do anything.
No, we have a, and someone else extolled.
It's one of those things, you wake up in the middle of the night and go, oh my God, did I do that? Okay.
Someone else did too, so we have a clean copy for
All right, never mind. I, there's, I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next on the agenda is correspondence.
How did you know that? We have nothing at this time.
Report solicitor?
Nothing to report.
Township engineer?
Nothing to report at this time.
Yes, I'd like to, at this time, request tenure for Officer Brenna Cole. Officer Brenna Cole completed her one-year probation status on June 27, 2024. During the 12 months of her probationary period, Officer Cole has been assigned to Officer Joseph Crowe and later Sergeant Robert Jones, who have acted as her field training officers throughout the training. Officer Cole is satisfactory, satisfactorily completed all the requirements of her field training program, and I recommend that she be granted tenure by the Board of Supervisors effective July 16, 2024.
So moved. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Officers, you may leave if you'd like.
Do you want to get a picture? Get a picture?
Normally do a picture, do we?
Get a picture.
Normally do a picture. Would you like a picture? All right. Let's do a picture. This is a
I have a paper.
Yeah.
Next on the agenda is Director of Operations.
Hi. First item is the Community Recreation Center, change order number four for skeptin construction. This is for the installation of the water line that runs in the rear of the building. During construction, we found out that the actual location of the water line was within less than, I think in my memo, 12 inches to the building. The engineers and the DTMA had concerns about that, so we talked to the team, went through the options of what we could and couldn't do, and the recommendation is to relocate it. Change order number four for skeptin construction is for $10,505.65 for the installation of the water line. I'm asking for the board's approval, please.
So moved. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Dave, can I just ask you, is that part of the contingency cost?
Yes.
Is that charged? Thank you.
Okay. Next item is U.S. Solutions, change order number one. This is a $0.00 change order. The reason why it's a $0.00 change order is because the number, the items that we're doing obviously bounces out to zero. It's for the increase in the voltage to the site. We also save money instead of tunneling and boring under, coming across Wells Road, we installed a pole. PICO allowed that, and with that basically outlined in the memo and in the change order document, the total is, will total $0.00. The reason for the change order and asking for the board's approval for change order number one for U.S. Solutions is that it's documenting the actual chain and scope of work for the project.
So moved. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye, thank you. Next item is All Sports. All Sports, technically All Sports Enterprises was approved by the Board of Supervisors to supply and install flooring in the Community Recreation Center, including the gym, the multipurpose space, the hallways. Also, it includes sports equipment, padding for the walls, and hoops and everything in the gym. When we sat down with them to finalize our scope of work and confirm color selections that we had to do, number one, we determined that we did not select any flooring for the bathroom. That's number one. That's outlined in this change order, so this change order does include installation of flooring in 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 locations, which are the bathrooms. And also with a selection of the flooring material for the multipurpose room, we had a actual, received a deduction in costs. So the overall cost for change order number one for All Sports is actually a $2,000 credit or deduction to their overall contract. So that brings their contract to $390,200. So I'm asking for the board's approval for All Sports, change order number one, please.
So moved.
Okay.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Easy one.
Community Recreation Center, outdoor courts and sports equipment, award recommendation. So as part of the project, you know, as we're doing their outdoor courts, which includes four tennis, six pickleball, two basketball, and two bocce courts. It's a mouthful. So we solicited proposals from three companies for the supply and install of basically the court surfacing, which is the color coding, the acrylic cover color, and the line work for all the courts. And also included basketball hoops, net posts, posts and nets for all the courts, including tennis and pickleball. Basically, we received the proposal from Miller Sports. They are the lowest. Two other proposals, which I noted in my memo, were somewhat incomplete because those companies only provided and only installed maybe part of what Miller actually would do. This is, Miller is on Co-Stars as well. They're a Co-Stars-approved company, as well as All Sports and Recreation Services, the other two companies. So the total for the Miller proposal to do color coding, nets, hoops, and things like that is $72,000, $172,000. I will note, this does not include the bocce ball court.
Yeah, why not?
Well, number one was, I thought we had it in there. We didn't when I went and when I asked them to include it. And we were coming today, we came to the deadline that they want to order this material and get this on their schedule. And so with the scheduling thing, I asked the vendor, I said, you know, would you be comfortable submitting this and then doing a change order?
You don't have to rebid that?
It's a Co-Star, so we don't have to rebid.
Okay.
Okay. So in that, so we're going to, next month, I'll bring forth their costs to do the bocce court artificial turf as a change order.
So none of these proposals had the, this bocce in
None of them did, no, correct.
Okay. What was our original budget for this?
No, I don't know. Off the top of my head, I'm sorry, I don't know. I'd have to get back to you on that number.
So
It was, this is somewhat significantly lower than I think we had budgeted. Not, it's lower, I shouldn't say significantly.
Is it lower than what we had budgeted for this?
Yes.
That's really, I want to know, higher or lower?
Lower, yes. And the number for the, so right now, the the courts, we had $262,800 in, as a line owner for the cost, right now at $170,000, $172,000. So I don't expect that, you know, we're going to see a significant, you know, $100,000 for bocce artificial turf.
Yeah.
Okay.
I move for the approval. What about the lights and all that's already?
That is part of the general contractor or the electrical contractor's scope of work as well as the fencing.
And fencing too?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, that was part of the original base bid. This was not, because the contractors don't typically do that, and it wasn't part of, basically was cut, left out that we would contract it out separately.
Thanks for the clarification.
I move for the approval of the award to Miller Sports for the outdoor courts and equipment in the amount of $172,000.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At the time of year, again, our 2425 fuel bid, award recommendation. The Northampton Township solicited bids on behalf of the Bucks County Consortium of local governments, as we are a member and participate with them. So they were put out to bid. We provided them with our needs for fuel for the year, basically runs from August 1st to July 31st. August 1st of this year to July 31st of next year. So the low bidder to supply unleaded regular and low sulfur diesel was Riggins Incorporated. It's the same contractor or same supplier we have currently. What the pricing is for is the market rate for the fuel plus the delivery charge. So really, the bid amount is the delivery charge. So we get charge market rate plus the delivery charge per gallon. So the unleaded regular for Riggins is .179 cents per gallon, and ultra-low sulfur diesel is .319 cents per gallon. I'm asking for the board's approval to accept this recommendation for fuel for 2425 calendar year.
Motion? So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 24 Road Program. We work with Panoni to prepare our 24, 24 Road Program, and we put that out to bid. And we did quite well. We're like the number, the problem that we had was that we learned after the bid went out and we actually opened the bids, was that North Wales Water Authority, that just ran the water line down Ferry Road from Forest Park up to Swamp Road, or up to, yeah, Swamp Road, Route 313, is planning on running a water line down Lime Kiln Road from Ferry down to Old Colonial Drive. Okay? So Lime Kiln Road was part of the base bid. So what we did is we looked at, and as you know, we always craft a bid with alternative bids in there and bid items so that we can basically spend the money we have in the budget and continue to move the road program forward. So we went back to JDM, James D. Morrissey Incorporated. There's a letter in your packet that we asked them to do two things. Number one was to remove the Lime Kiln Road out of the base bid, as well as two items or items we call, which is the high-friction surface treatment, that we're going to remove from the bid. So right now, the bid as agreed to by James D. Morrissey, and I'm asking the board to approve, is the base bid, which is all the items in the base bid less Lime Kiln Road and the high-friction surfacing, plus alternates 1 through 4, which include Turkey Lane and Farmhouse Lane, Valley Drive, Coon Drive, Old Nursery, Coles, Brooks, Brook Drive, and Sansom Circle. The total for the 24 Road Program is $1,085,219.95. So I'm asking for the board's approval.
Will we, will we look at moving Lime Kiln to next year then? After their construction's finished, hopefully?
Their messaging right now, they don't have a specific date. They're thinking 25, 26.
Okay, so whenever they're?
Correct. We're waiting for them to find out their schedule.
Don't they have some obligation to do a resurf, resurface and repair?
Usually just trench restoration, right?
Typically, yeah. I mean, so, you know, sometimes it's trench restoration, sometimes half with overlay, depends upon, on, I just felt that, we felt that we didn't want to pave the road and then have, and rip out material that was just, you know, brand new. I think that's bad, that's bad money, spending bad money there. But they would be responsible for some portion.
Dave, will they address, so when you're on Ferry and you turn right onto Lime Kiln, it's very, it's a really tight corner. There's a drain right there for the stormwater. Will they address that? Because I think it's a safety, potentially a safety issue when you turn right.
That wouldn't be part of?
I'm just wondering if any of that will get addressed when things are getting dug up? I mean?
That wouldn't be part of their scope, I'm sure. So one of the things we do is either it's in the Ferry Road right-of-way, which is Pendot, or it's in our right-of-way, which is ours, and we should take a look at it. So it's either Pendots or the township's responsibility, not North Wales.
It's just, well, there's a drain right there, and it drops. So someone taking a right can easily drop their tire into that drain that's right there. It's Ferry, and then you take a right on Lime Kiln. If we could, we can talk offline. I just want it to?
Yeah, it's either?
Bring it to your attention since that area is getting addressed, like, let's do it right.
It's either Pendots or it's the township's responsibility.
I think it's ours, but?
Probably is, and we get it done quicker than Pendot. So I'm asking for the board's approval for the 2024 Road Program, please.
So moved. I'll second. Okay, Barbara and Judy, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to ask Mr. Johnson to address the 24 Traffic Signal Safety Improvement Bids.
Thank you, Mr. Tomco. The township solicited bids for various traffic signal safety improvements at seven different intersections within the township. On June 10th, two bids were received, and we are recommending awarding the contract to Armor &amp; Sun Electric, Inc. in the amount of $164,655.00.
So moved.
Second?
Yeah, can I ask a question? So I would just like to understand from my own edification, how has the signal improved? Because there's, traffic signal's already there. I know it's the Green Light Go program. So how, how does, how has the signal improved?
Sure. On 611, there's been a number of accidents that the police have identified with people making left turns from 611 to Arms House into the shopping centers and things like that. It's high speed on 611. So there's a few things that we're doing. One, there's a five-section left-turn signal head up there. And so you can turn, and we're replacing it with flashing yellow arrows. If you've been at the Swamp, Swamp and East intersection that the township recently upgraded, that has the left-turn flashing arrow. So that provides some additional indication to the motor vehicle driver about the operation and making a left and being cautious and things like that. Also, we are extending the red and the yellow times slightly at those intersections so to try to, when someone's turning, that there's a clear-out phase with the yellow and the red timings. So they're being increased by a second or two. And then we also have emergency preemption that's going in. And I think at State and East, that has the most improvements. There's some video techs and a few other things that were included in the Green Light Go application, so.
Thank you, good information.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
The next item, the Comfort Cottage Central Park Bathroom Design Services. I am asking the board to table. We are still looking on alternatives, and I think we're going to amend our recommendation, but I'm asking to table this, and we'll be back in August with some ideas.
Will that delay the implementation much?
No.
Can we get something between a line drawing and a rendering soon? So I can put it on our information? Any idea what this thing's going to look like?
We do have renderings. But they're like these, they're not like the renderings we have for the park in the Community Recreation Center building.
I'm trying to raise money for a bathroom this summer.
Yeah, so I think we can, we can work with, whether it's MKSD or other consultants, so somebody can do a nice rendering of what we think that's going to be.
I don't want to pay for it, though. I want it to be free. We can't afford it.
There's a couple consultants in the audience, I think we can?
Come on, Matt.
We can do.
Okay, thanks.
Do you have a motion to table? So moved. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
We actually have been looking for some kind of picture of a comfort cottage we can put on our?
We have a rendering from, from the supplier, but it's like, it's like out in white space, so it doesn't give you any context, and I should like use a, which we can work with, we can do.
The one we have now is?
Yeah.
Not good?
Yeah, I know. I'm going to add this last item, the 2024 Bike and Hike Trail Pipe Replacement Project. I'm going to ask Mr. Johnson to address. I just want to let you know that if you recall, we had a culvert project that was done. This item was part of that. It was not awarded due to it was over budget, so we rebid it. And Mr. Johnson's going to present the results and the recommendation.
Yes, with the advertisement of the Bike and Hike Trail Pipe Replacement, there were two bids that were received on July 11th. We're recommending that the township awarded to T. Schiffer Contractors, Inc. in the amount of $143,800.00. This will, I guess, address flooding issues in this area with regard to the trail. And by rebidding this, I think that if we had awarded it as an alternative last time and now awarding it at this price, this time as a separate contract, it's actually saving the township about $175,000.
And where is it located, please?
Basically, what is it, Neshamani along the Neshamani Trail or the Neshamani Creek? What is it, Silverdale Farms, I think behind?
Behind the Dozton Executive Quarters in Silver Maple?
State Road and?
Silver Maple Farms.
202.
Yeah.
That area always floods.
Yeah, it was an existing pipe back before the development was built that served as a farm connect, you know, between farm fields and was under capacity.
This is part of the township's typical maintenance operations. And I mean, you maintain, I think, 40-some structures for drainage and traffic and trails.
That floods all the time.
Yes.
So will that, will this help alleviate that?
Yes.
Yes.
All that washout and sediment.
So this cost is going to be coming out of our?
This, this is scheduled to come out of the Fund 53, which is the roads and bridges.
But we're separate, even though it's that road budget, we're still tracking which one is bike and hike and which one is roads, correct?
Yeah, actually, the way we track that is not by, we track them by project.
By project?
And we have to report them by, you know, by project as well and improvements for our infrastructure depreciation schedule. So we do that. That's how we do it.
I'd like to make a motion that we go forward with the recommendation for the award.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Township Manager?
Do we have to do the Eastman?
Yeah, I think we have to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I move for the approval of Resolution Number 2611.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, now Township Manager.
I have nothing at this time.
Barbara, would you like to start with the supervisor?
Um, yeah. The Bucks County Association of Township Officials has requested that all municipalities in the region, where's my stuff? Issue a proclamation, issue a resolution contrary House Bill 2045 and House Bill 1976. House Bill 2025 calls for buyright multi-dwelling construction in residential areas that are currently zoned for a single family. House Bill Number 1976 calls for buyright multifamily dwellings in commercial zones. I think the impetus for these two is to try and get more low-income housing or affordable housing in areas where they're not already provided for. The Cato has taken a stand against this because it takes away from the local municipalities zoning powers. Imagine a 50,000-square-foot office complex that will now be multiple-family housing. That's what they're asking for. Or a neighborhood where you have single-family units, single-family dwellings, and now you can put up dwellings of multiple families. You know, so what the Cato is asking, and I will put into a form of motion, is that we issue a resolution opposing House Bills 1976 and 2045.
In principle, I agree with what they're trying to do as far as making more space available for housing, but I'm very concerned about that this just puts a blanket over everything.
It does.
Yeah, and we have limited office space and commercial space in Doylestown specifically. Once that's gone, we're probably not getting that back ever. And it, and we also, this doesn't take into account like the necessary infrastructure in those areas. So as, these are, these are things like multi-use housing, where you have the offices and the housing, I think is great. So I mean, we are talking about and planning and?
We already do that.
Yeah. So it's not that I'm necessarily opposed to these ideas. I just think this is way too far sweeping for it.
I agree. My objection to the bills are only that the municipality, it's not, a one-size-fits-all doesn't work in Pennsylvania. We're too different. Our municipalities are far too different. What would work for someone in a more rural area would work, wouldn't work for us. And so I support that as well. I think that, that we, you know, I think, I agree with the resolution to oppose. So?
I put it in the form of a?
Do I have a second?
A second.
Oh, go ahead, Dan.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll advise the Cato of our decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Nancy?
I'm sure, excited for a national night out. Thank you very much for continuing to organize that. Was looking, I was just going to ask, Dave, do you have any update for us on the parking lot and where we stand with that? And if you could just update the board?
Yes, currently, what Panoni is doing specifically, Sean is managing that project, not Mr. Johnson, they're looking into, right now, our drainage impacts. Before, when that was a site for the Community Recreation Center, and we were going to expand that parking lot, we had some significant impacts and increase in capacity to the basin that's below Fields 4 and 5. So Panoni is looking at alternatives and trying to come up with basically ideas where maybe we can look at some other basin locations instead of trying to deepen that basin. So that's right now where we're at, and then, and then we need to get through some permitting procedures with the DEP, and then we can move forward. That's where we're at right now, so in the design phase.
Once you have an estimated cost, maybe by the next budget meeting, you'll have a sense of where we stand?
I hope, I will, I will ask and try to get that available. Okay, and that is, and we, again, just so I know, we do have that in, in the budget for 24 and 25. Design is in 24, and paving's in 25. What I would say is that we can always defer paving out further years if needed.
Okay.
Okay?
Great, thank you. Also, the Turk Road LTAC, Judy, I didn't know if there was any update. I saw Warrington put, painted some slowdown and some things on the wall, on the, on the wall, on the roads. So I didn't know if there was any update we could provide anyone listening tonight from Doylestown?
I don't have any update on that.
Ms. Stansfield, I believe that our traffic engineer is filling in tonight for the engineer, but I think he's our best bet to answer follow-up from the meeting we had and the surveys and everything like that, and the data you're collecting right now.
Sure. We are getting data collected. We're in the data collection process right now. And also, the township is working with the residents that indicated that they were interested in being part of the Neighborhood Traffic Committee, to form that committee. Warrington Township did install some striping and some additional signs. We had nicely suggested that maybe they wait until we go through the study process and get everybody's input before anything was decided upon. But they went ahead and did what they're allowed to do on their side of the township, so.
I was just going to ask for the reason why we wouldn't consider doing the striping now. That's really what I was wondering, just from a safety perspective, or if that impacts the study, that's why I was asking.
Yes, we're looking to take everybody's input into account and come up with solutions that address everybody's concerns and needs.
Okay, great, thank you.
Judy?
Okay, yeah, I'd like to report a little bit on the committees, that I'm the liaison. First of all, the EAC, Jim just left. The EAC did not have a meeting this month, but they did have the Garden Party a few weeks ago. And I can tell you that they spent hours putting together the games, the program, the food. Everything was, was well-thought-out over several meetings, hundreds of hours, I'm sure, of work put into that. I understand it was a very hot day. It was nicely attended. And so I wanted to give them kudos for all the work that they did. I also want to point out that they also used recyclable compostable products in, in their celebration, which I think is, is, you know, they don't just, you know, talk the talk. They walk the walk. They actually follow through, and they don't contribute to landfill for the environment. So thank you for that. I'm also liaison for Hike and Bike, and we met this morning. The update is the Shady Retreat Trail, which I've been excited about, is, is going to be completed this fall. And what's, there's so many kids and families that live along that trail that will be able to more safely walk to school across the Lime Kiln, Lime Kiln Pike Bridge into, into the, into the borough. There's also other trails that are being looked at, and before anything is moved forward, I'm sure that they will be coming to the Board of Supervisors for approval. There was no meeting of the Water and Sewer at this time. So, and I'm, I just want to say, lieutenants, nice to have you on the board up here with us on the DAS. So thanks for joining us.
Okay, Dan?
I have nothing new to report that's not going to be coming up in land development next.
Okay, wonderful. All right.
So I did attend the Garden Party. It was phenomenal. I see a bunch of people here that were there as well. It was a beautiful time. It was a great celebration for the 10th anniversary of our native plant demonstration garden. If you haven't made your way past, we're Kid's Castle, over the bridge by the Retention Basin. It is unbelievable. It really is. Every time I go there, it's, it just impresses me. And the fact that it's free for everybody to go through is, is, is just incredible. July is also Park and Recreation Appreciation Month. Doylestown Township has seven parks, over 30 miles of trails, and over 400 acres of parkland. This year's Park and Rec theme is Where You Belong. The National Recreation and Park Association's website reads, "Where You Belong celebrates the many ways Park and Recreation professionals across the country foster a sense of belonging in their community by providing welcoming and inclusive programs, essential services for all ages and abilities, and safe, accessible spaces to build meaningful connections." I just want to say, we are all very grateful for our Park and Rec Department, our volunteers, and everybody that contributes to our parks and recreations here in Doylestown Township. And just to know that the Where You Belong? And just to know that, um, the Where You Belong theme has been an ongoing theme in Doylestown Township. We just have, have an incredible, um, incredible group of people, and, uh, I couldn't be more proud. Uh, it's also, uh, Disability Pride Month, uh, marking, it marks the anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, signed into law by President George H.W. Bush on, uh, July 26, 1990, 1990. The ADA increased opportunities and access for people with disabilities in employment and community life, and adds protections against discrimination. It's, uh, one of the most important pieces of legislation, I think, for, um, for equity. Um, I also wanted to announce, um, I was, uh, watching the county, um, um, Commissioners Meeting this past month, and, uh, they had a whole demonstration on this new program that they're offering. It's called BCHRP. Uh, it stands for Bucks County Home Repair Program. Uh, it's a grant program. You can get up to $50,000 for home repairs or modifications. These are home repairs, like if you need electrical work done, plumbing work done, if you need to make your home accessible, uh, have some modifications for, for accessibility. I know that as people age, sometimes they need, um, uh, these, these types of modifications, and they're not always cheap. Uh, mobile homes are eligible for $15,000 worth of this grant. The, uh, applications will be accepted through August 15th for this round. Uh, just go on buckscity.gov, uh, forward slash, forward slash BCHRP, uh, to find out more about it. It focuses not only on lower-income folks, but also middle-income, uh, the people that usually end up falling through that hole where you have a need, but you don't, you make too much money. Uh, this, this one actually has a pretty decently high income level. And I think that's all I have for, um, for announcements. So, next, uh, on the agenda, there's no unfinished business. We'll be moving on to new business, land development. Uh, Mr. Lafty, would you like to come to the podium?
Hello, I am, uh, Matt Lafty. I'm the owner of Four Buck Run Drive. And currently we are applying for a, um, lot line change between the areas. My property is Four Buck Run Drive, and it backs up to 59 Steeplechase. Um, the land is approximately, uh, the land, uh, is .225 acres. And to this point, we have satisfied all the requirements from, um, the planning commission through the township, the planning commission through the county, and I'm here today for the, you know, the final pieces, uh, with your approval today.
Does anybody have questions?
I just wanna say, that was a lot of approvals that you had to go through.
Yes.
It was a lot.
Does the solicitor have to weigh in on any of this, or can we just move to approve the final minor subdivision plan?
This is a, the draft letter that you have is a pretty standard letter. All of the conditions are our standard conditions. There's nothing unique to this project. It's been reviewed by, uh, Township Staff, and I think it's ready to go.
Okay, I move for the approval of the final minor subdivision plan lot line change for, um, for Buck Road, Buck, sorry, Buck Run Drive.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Lafty.
Thank you very much.
The next, we, next we have the Plan Review Extension, uh, request for 280 North Broad Street.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the next is the Audit Proposals.
Um, yes, we've received, um, the two proposals. Um, we've received, um, we've had requests for a number of others, but, um, we, um, have the two in recommending Zelenkovsky Axle Rod.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the MS4 Annual Status Report.
Yes, um, you have the information from, uh, Gilmore and Associates, um, for the MS4. Um, the board recall, we used to work with GHD, and we separated out the work of the Township Engineer and the work from, uh, GHD. We're now combining everything together, uh, working with, um, our consultants at Gilmore. And you have their proposal to do the I, um, ID&amp;D, that, that infiltration, um, measurements that, um, the other group did and the testing that goes along with that, along with the, um, other requirements, uh, that we have to meet under the MS4. Um, their total proposal is $53,980. Judy Stern-Goldstein, our land planner, um, is here and can answer any specific, uh, requirements related to the MS4, um, proposal.
We've seen this so many times. Um, I move for the approval of the, um, uh, what am I trying to say? I move for the approval of MS4, um, uh, Status Report and, um, handling to Gilmore for the amount of $52,980.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Judy can do it.
Judy's got it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next, we have the Font Hill Conservation Easement.
Yes, um, there's actually two parts to this one. Um, as you know, the Font Hill has asked us to, um, participate in a grant that they've applied for. As part of that grant through the Highlands Conservation Act, uh, they're requesting, uh, a resolution. And then in addition to that, um, as part of their grant through DCD, there is a letter, uh, from the Township that, um, if they're given the grant, that we understand the Heritage Conservancy will serve as the holder of the easement. So there's two, two items, the resolution and then the authorization for the letter. If the board could address both of those.
I move that we approve Resolution 2610, which gives us the opportunity to participate in the Federal Highlands Boundary, um, consistent with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service for the Highlands Conserv- Conservation Act. And that would, I would hope that the, the, uh, the map goes with the approval of the resolution, so we know what, what it means, shows the demarcation and so on. So that's my motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we need a-
I move for the approval of a letter in support of, um, to, directed to Rick Seiger, that we consent to the land acquisition and participation of that with, um, Heritage Conservancy.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so next is the Community Recreation Center Grant Agreement.
Yes, the board will recall that we received, um, 1.5 million in, um, our cre- our cap money. Um, it's administered by the Commonwealth Office of the Budget, and we have now received the, um, grant agreement. And we need the board to approve it and have, um, Chairman Herring, uh, sign on the Township's behalf.
So moved.
I'll second. Sorry, Dan. Give it to Dan.
I'll take it this one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And now we're at the portion of our meeting where we're gonna have some updates from our boards and commissions. Jim Baldassari, Dr. Baldassari, would you like to come up?
Good evening, everybody. Jim Baldassari, I'm the Chair of the EAC. And I'd like to give your update for 23, 24 so far. Okay, so that's awfully far away. Um, how do I advance it? Okay. Great. I actually can't read that, to be honest. Is it possible to make it a little bit bigger? Thank you. Oh, I can just read that. Okay, great. Thank you. So the AC's been very active, as I think many of you know, on many different fronts. And, um, uh, we have, you know, almost always had a full complement of, uh, participants, um, seven members. And so each of us has a thing that we really like to do, and so we've been able to do a lot of different things. And I'll describe those to you, uh, now. Of course, Birdtown is one of our biggest activities, and I want to give all credit to Heidi Schiver, who is Mrs. Birdtown. For the 2023 calendar year, Doylestown Township was awarded a Silver Level through Birdtown, Pennsylvania, uh, which is based on things like education and activity and outreach and so on and so forth. Um, so our, our Birdtown remains very, very active indeed. Uh, we continue to hold bird walks periodically in Central Park and other places. Uh, we've organized native plant presentations and giveaways. We support citizen science through things like Nest Watch. And, uh, we clean out bluebird nests every, every spring, so that the, the bluebirds will return and, uh, use those nests again. We've planted trees. Uh, we've worked with students at Del Val. We've worked with Girl Scouts to set up a project recently. And we, uh, and again, Heidi, through a lot of her activity, created a brochure to warn residents about the dangers of cats to birds and our environment. So, um, we continue to be very, very active with Birdtown, and we're very proud of this. Our native plant gardens, we talked about a little bit earlier. Uh, we, we maintain an award-winning native plant demonstration garden in Central Park. And I think of this as in three sections. We have our, our native plant demonstration garden, which has been there now 10 years. We celebrated that this year. Uh, we have the restoration we're doing around the Retention Basin, which now includes some floating gardens, thanks to Eric Neal. Uh, and of course, we, most recently, we have our Native American garden, um, and the signage was just installed, um, this, just this summer before the, before the, um, anniversary celebration. So that area continues to improve and expand and attract a lot of attention, and we're very proud of it. And, and I should say, we're very, very thankful to the Township for all the support you provide us for all those activities. And we did have a garden celebration for 10 years of our native plant demonstration garden, um, on June 22nd. And as, as Judy mentioned, um, I think it went off very well. Uh, it was pretty well attended, considering how warm it was. But, you know, um, you know, that's, that's the, the risks of any kind of outdoor, outdoor activity. And again, I wanna thank the Township for all the effort they put in, and also all the volunteers, including, uh, Blythe and Kathy, who were there and, and helped us out so much. Another activity we have is our Watershed Friendly Properties. This is a program through the Penn State Master Watershed Stewards, where you find, identify a property and you look at its quality of land as it supports the watershed. And you can score it and get a rating, and if it's deficient, you can try to remediate. And so some years ago, we took on the task of identifying properties which were owned by the Township, and to start to assess those one by one and try to bring them up to, up to scratch. So, um, there was an area of the, of Central Park which was certified in 2022. And we've been working now for the last couple of years on two additional, uh, Township-owned properties, one on Ash Way and one on Sheridan Road. And we think both of these will be remediated by the end of this year through a combination of local volunteerism and, again, Township activity. And if we can get those certified, then we'll move on to the next project. Uh, single-use plastic reduction, I think as everybody knows, uh, we've been at this for a long time. And it was in March of this year that, um, that the Board of Supervisors approved an ordinance, which limits the use of single-use plastic bags, which are given out at the point of, point of sale, point of checkout. So this feels like a monumental achievement. Um, it's actually a drop in the bucket when you look at the, the issue of plastics in the world, but it's, uh, I think it's an important step forward, um, for the Township, and we really appreciate, um, the Township doing this. The ordinance will go into effect in November of twen- uh, of this year, 2024, and should eliminate thousands and thousands of plastic bags from our local environment. The EAC is providing some reusable bags, um, for free as a courtesy. We have some in the back, in the back. So if anybody would like a cloth, reusable shopping bag, please help yourself. We have a limited number, but, uh, you guys are first in line. Climate action planning is another area we've been pretty active in. Um, this, this is a, a personal passion of mine and also Kurt's. Uh, we have been participating in the state DEP, Penn State Climate Action Planning Process now for, um, it's going on two and a half years, I guess now, um, based on the Ready for 100 Resolution, which was passed by the Board of Supervisors in, uh, 2020. Um, in 2022, 2023, we did an energy survey of the entire Township, and that will now be the basis for our climate action plan, which we hope to have to the Board of Supervisors later this year. But in addition to that, we have acquired the services of a shared energy manager, which is provided to the Township free of charge through state DEP. This is Wilson Engineering. They are, their whole business is, is engineering around energy. Um, and they are providing us, I don't know how many hours of consultation service this year, but I'm sure it's thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars of consultation service to the Township. Uh, we have now completed a, what I would call a desktop energy survey of this building. Um, and I think that that's revealing, and I think we may find that there's an opportunity to save energy and money in this building. Uh, they've assisted us with the presentation that Kurt Sawyer gave earlier about EV vehicle transition. And, um, to, uh, Nancy's point, we would certainly get them, more information from them for you. We think that's something that's very salient in the Township. Um, and we're also going to look at the feasibility of a solar array somewhere in the Township that would potentially cover all of the electrical needs for the Township for the next 25 to 30 years. We have a preliminary idea of what, how that might work. We are gonna work with Wilson Engineering to do a much deeper dive on that, to see if it's, it's both economically feasible and also technically feasible. But that's something we hope to do, uh, again, before the end of this year. We also provide native plant consultation, whereas, uh, this is, uh, Chad, Chad Clem and, uh, Marcello, um, Mangano have taken upon themselves to provide consultation to residents and homeowners. And they actually go to their houses, visit their properties, and give them advice on how they can manage their gardens in a way which is more sustainable. And this is becoming a, uh, this is becoming a real thing. We just had another, um, another consultation, I think, this week. Um, in addition, we have, again, begun to take requests for evaluation of trees. Residents have trees that they really love. We'll come out and assess them to see if they are a champion tree or a heritage tree, and if so, we will provide a certificate. And we've done nine of those already this year. So that, that's, uh, that's something we've, we've picked up again, and, um, and I think the residents really do like that. We would continue to encourage the residents to, to send in their requests for potential, uh, heritage trees. Arbor Day, um, we had 30 days on Arbor Day, uh, 30 volunteers on Arbor Day, and we planted 50 trees. And that was a big success, and, uh, again, I, I have to acknowledge the, uh, Chris Mason and his team for all the work they do to make these things possible. Something that's a little different is, uh, is our Dark Skies Initiative. Uh, the idea here is that we have so much light pollution at night in our Township. It affects not only our, our ability to see the sky, but it also affects the biology of, of creatures that need to move around at night, that need to feed at night, that need to reproduce at night. And so, um, it is a problem in the environment, and I think if we can start to reduce unnecessary nighttime lighting, that would be beneficial. We've met with the Township Staff on a number of occasions, and they've been receptive to what we've suggested. Heidi and Eric drafted a Lights Out Resolution, which was passed by the Board of Supervisors, and we, we appreciate that. And, uh, we've also published a number of educational articles in the Township Newsletter and more recently in the Bucks Herald, to make people aware of the issue. And beyond that, we, um, we continue to write and contribute to the Township Newsletter and some local publications. It's something we like to do. And we've had some inputs of sustainability of the Planned Community Center, and we appreciate, um, uh, you're, you're taking our suggestions. So that's all I have, and, uh, is any questions? Would you be happy to answer?
I just, I wanna thank you for that Garden Party and for giving out those native plants there. I planted two of them, and they're just loving it.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Oh, yeah, I, I didn't mention that, but yes, we, we love to give out native plants because, um, you know, we just, we're just spreading the love around, you know? Unfortunately, it's been very dry. I've got a few in my garden, and I have to water them because it's just been so dry.
Yeah, I, yeah, but thanks. It was a really good idea. And Andrea made the best cocktails, mocktails.
Mocktails.
Yes.
Absolutely. I wrote the recipe. You, you, it, they were wonderful, right? I mean, they were, thank you, Andrea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Kelly.
Good evening. I'm Blythe Kelly. This is my 12th year serving on the Park and Rec Board, and my second year serving as Chair. as Chair. The majority of our meetings this year is focused on our park improvements project, our board's wayfinding sign project, and planning this year's events, as well as setting new goals for our board. Our board's primary purpose is to support our Parks and Recreation Department. We are intent in supporting the capital fundraising campaign for our park improvement projects and also participating in all of our township events. Our summer concerts series has kicked off every Wednesday evening in Central Park, which features live music at Beer Garden and food trucks. Our board proudly supports this concert series by having two of our board members volunteer weekly to help guide cars, sell raffle tickets, food and drink, and offer overall assistance. We're also assisting the township in planning our annual golf outing. We're excited to be at Commonwealth National Golf Course in Horsum this year on Monday, October 7th. We not only volunteer for the event, but we also have a new golf subcommittee, which helps to plan the event as well as get sponsors and golfers. As of right now, we are doing very well with sponsorship and also with golfers. I believe we only have eight to 10 foursomes remaining, so if anyone is interested in sponsoring or playing, please let myself or Karen Sweeney know. We'll also be working on December Fest, which is scheduled for December 13th and 14th. This will encompass several events, including the Mrs. Claus Jammy Jam, our fourth annual Santa event, and our Paws in the Park event. Additionally, our Dog Park Subcommittee is preparing for the annual Fido float, scheduled for September 7th at Fanny Chapman Pool. We're also planning a virtual golf event to be held in the Borough at the Main Swing Indoor Golf Lounge on March of 2025. Our board has also collaborated with the EAC this year. Jim and a few of his members joined us at December Fest to teach the children to make homemade pine cone bird feeders. Thank you. Our board assisted them at their lovely garden party last month, and I'm hopeful to continue this joint team effort for future events. Lastly, I'm excited to announce our Wayfinding Side Subcommittee is close to finalizing a wayfinding map to be used as a pilot map for Central Park. We will develop the map and a structure to provide a map station for various locations in Central Park. Our goal is to provide user-friendly map, providing all amenities and their locations, as well as trail locations, connections, and length. QR codes will be utilized to provide easy access for detailed parts of the map, as well as connecting the Park and Rec website. This pilot map, once approved, will be used to eventually develop a map for each of our parks. In closing, our board would like to acknowledge all the hard work by our Township Parks and Maintenance Staff. They do an amazing job in keeping our parks safe and beautiful. Additionally, we'd like to thank you, the Board of Supervisors, all the township volunteers, as well as our sponsors for their support in our Park and Rec programs and events. Thank you.
Thank you, Blythe.
Thank you. Mr. Denton?
Different man.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Ed Denton. I'm the Chair of the Pension Advisory Committee. Here's a listing of our township residents who are on the committee, as well as the township employees and Board of Supervisor members. In terms of 2023 accomplishments, we monitor, we continue to monitor the financial condition and investment performance of the township's employee pension plans. We met semi-annually with the Township Investment Advisor Vanguard to conduct an in-depth review of the township's pension plan investment portfolio. We drafted and presented an annual pension plan status report to the Board of Supervisors and Township Management. And we developed a recommendation for the pension plan contribution amounts for the 2024 budget and five-year plan. This chart shows the pension plan assets for the, for the benefit of people in the audience who may not be familiar with the pension plan. It shows the pension plan assets from 1997 and 2023. The pension plan assets are the cumulative amount set aside each year to fund the employee pension plans. Funding for the pension plans comes from the township, the state, and employee contributions. As of the end of 2023, the township's pension plan investment portfolio totaled 28.7 million. As of a couple of weeks ago, that amount was up to over 30 million. It's been a pretty good year, and hopefully that'll continue. In terms of pension liabilities, pension liabilities represent the net present value of future pension payments owed to current and retired employees. As of the end of last year, the total pension liabilities owed employees were 31.7 million. So the goal of the pension plan, you have the assets and you have the liabilities. And ideally, we want to have them as close as possible, and, and also to have them growing at the same rate over time. How we track that, this is one of the ways we track that. This has the police pension actual returns over time. The blue bars represent the actual returns in, in each of those, each of those years. The red line represents the five-year moving annual total, and in the top right has the, the average annual returns for the three-year, five-year, 10-year, and 14 years since, or 13 years since 2010. In terms of objectives, the first one was a little bit of surprise, unfortunate surprise, is Vanguard got out of the pension, pension management business for municipalities. So at the beginning of this year, the township, Board of Supervisors, and the PAC had to get together to issue an RFP, review the RFPs and score the RFP, sorry, the submissions. We interviewed the, the top candidates, and we recommended that Gerard be, be, continued to be the, the investment advisor going forward. All that was accomplished in the first six weeks of this year. In terms of the other objectives, they're pretty similar to last year and prior years. We'll continue to monitor the financial condition and performance of the pension plans, meet semi-annually with the, the investment advisor, issue that, that, that status report, and work with Gerard on their annual presentation to the Board of Supervisors, which will happen next February or March. Third is, we'll be recommending the amounts for the 2025 budget and five-year plan, work with the Township's actuary and Gerard to get a better understanding of the financial statements associated with the pension plans, in particular, getting a better understanding of the projected pension payout forecast for each of the defined benefit plans. Continue to look for opportunities to develop and implement continuing education programs for the Board of Supervisors, PAC, and township employees to ensure that all parties are familiar with the key issues and concepts associated with the management of the township's employee pension plans, including government regulations and best practices, et cetera. And finally, meeting with the, the Finance Committee to provide them with an update of the status of the employee pension plans. That's it?
Thank you, Ed.
Questions?
Thank you very much. Are you gonna, when you present, you'll have a, this defined benefit plan? Because I know that's like a, it's its own entity, but we have a timeframe, so we're planning for fi, our finance, you know, we do our budget to start to see how it's going to impact.
Yeah, I will be presenting next month, that, that whole package.
Perfect.
Yeah. Thank you. Any, any other questions?
Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Chris Sussinguth, and I'm the Chair for the Veterans Advisory Committee. And I just want to go over some of the highlights that we did this year and have planned coming for the next remaining part of 2024. We actually have in the process now an Eagle Scout slash Flag Retirement Committee going or a project going. It's a local scout that's looking into obtaining some type of a container, a sturdy container that we can position here and possibly another location within the township, and then so we can retire respectfully our country's flags. So that's one project we have going on. Like to talk about the Doylestown Memorial Day Parade. So first off, I want to thank the board for allowing the township to be represented in the parade. This year, that truck looked pretty neat up front, driving down the street with the banner for the, for the VAC. I hope you'll have a chance to, oh, to see it. And so I really appreciate that, letting that guy. And speaking with that driver the other day, he's really enjoyed, he was surprised how many people came out to the parade.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, and actually participate in it, and the excellent amount of spectators that, that come to it. I think there's close to like 15,000 people that come to the parade. So it's nice to be represented by the, our committee and by the township. So I, again, I appreciate that. Big project that we're working on to help support other committees, in particular the Park and Rec, is we have an idea that's out there that we're working on to finalize, is that we're going to the flagpole for the new Park and Rec building. It's a 20-foot flagpole. We're looking to sell an inch of that for $25 to, to the community to honor a veteran or a first responder. And then those monies will pay for the flagpole. And then when the building's open, then we'll dedicate that. So that's our, our plan for that project. And to, to actually show another, and this might be another Eagle Scout project that we, I came up with, is that inside the lobby of the new building, there would be some type of graphic arcs thing or some kind of display or something like that, or just, I was even thinking the other day, a picture. Unfortunately, we don't have the, a street in town where we can hang up all the flags of, of veterans and all that. But I thought, wouldn't it be neat if we could do something in the lobby and have a collage of all the people that donated for the money and have a small picture of that person? And so it would be their name, their service that they were in, and they get, or, or, you know, if they were a first responder or, you know, public works. And then it would have their name in, in there, and then, and then their family in honor of. So that was a project that we're working on now, and I think they'll look pretty neat if we dedicate that to the support, the Park and Rec support the community as, as a teammate for the one committee. So that's, that's one project we're working on. We have a flag raising ceremony going to be set for the rescheduled of the opening for the concert series. And that happens actually fall on 9/11, which is a Wednesday this year. So we're looking to get that together where we will honor our, you know, our, our police, our farm, and those in the community up in New York City that had passed, probably been in silence along with the National Anthem and a, you know, singing the National Anthem. So we're going to be working on that as we get into September. And then one thing that we're going to work with, with the, with the Bucks County Veterans Affairs Office, is with Matt and Betty, is they have a program where it's Q and A for veterans. They can come, and that actually gives them information on what the advisory does, you know, that committee does, or that organization does for veterans. So it's stuff like how they can get assistance, how they can sign up to be buried at the national cemetery, and things along those lines. So we're going to schedule that for like September, October timeframe. And then the last thing we have on our, on our radar is Veterans Day. It was suggested, because there's so much competition for elected officials and everybody's time for Veterans Day to honor our veterans, that it was suggested that we work with another organization or a school or something like the Y to actually assist them in a program there. And that way, we're not in competition for, for time or something like that, or trying to get our elected officials there. So that way, we're working a little smarter than we are trying to compete with those, with those other people that are trying to honor our veterans. And that's what we have. So that's our presentation. Any questions?
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you so much, Chris.
My pleasure.
Appreciate it. Mr. Laar?
Good evening, Board. Bill Laar, Chairman of the Zoning Hearing Board. I know Margaret said to keep this report quick, so I'm going to make it quick for you. I know you all get a copy of the results of the hearings that we have from our solicitor, Tom Panzer. This is a summary for 2023. We had 22 hearings. Of the 22 hearings, we had, six of them were in-law suites. Compared to 2022, we had 18 hearings. So far in 2024, we've had 15 hearings. Of the 15 hearings, 50% of the hearings have been for in-law suites. So I think we're seeing a trend of more and more hearings for in-law suites in the township, which is interesting. One of the concerns that we do have is the board. And I know when they fill out the application, they don't need a solicitor or an engineer. But a lot of the applications that we end up getting, especially when we get a diagram of what they're trying to do, it's really not complete. And we have one of our board members who is an engineer. It drives him crazy. And we've had to continue a number of hearings because the applications weren't complete. So I don't know where this falls in as far as if it's, I know it comes under Sinclair, but how many people he has. But if he can review the applications to make sure that it's filled out so when it comes to us, and the gentleman or person that makes the presentation at the hearing has all the information so we can come up with, you know, come up with a decision. We have one, we have one question. Monster Tree Service, they were in in 2020, and we denied it, and they appealed. And we've heard nothing from what happened on that appeal, so I didn't know if the board had any update on the Monster Tree Service.
No, we do not.
So is that, is?
It's still under appeal.
It's still under appeal? Okay. Other than that, Margaret said keep it short, so I did. Any questions from the board?
Is, is there, if I might, is there a way if, if someone is, has to come back again, their application's not complete, that they would have to have an additional fee to pay for your time? Is that something that's possible?
I can't answer that. Stephanie, do you know?
No, there's cer, we already have set fees for the, the application, that they have to provide an escrow to cover certain expenses and an application fee that cover the other expenses. And we always do a comparison for our fee schedule as to what other municipalities are charging. We try to be as competitive so that we do cover our expenses, especially related to advertising, the stenographer, things like that.
Right. I, I guess I was just speaking in terms of Mr. Laar having to come back and do the same petition again.
It's on the applicant. I mean, they, they don't have to be represented by an attorney. They don't, I mean, they don't have to have an engineered plan. They have to have a sketch of their property. A lot of times, they pull things from the files, they pull it off the internet, they have an Ariel. And, you know, we can talk to Mr. Panzer, Sinclair and I can talk to him about what he would find as acceptable, and we can try to guide the applicants to make sure that they have those. But a lot of the applications that you see, so they were for in-law suites, they're being done by township residents, pools, deck sheds, things like that. So a lot of times, you know, you're not going to have a larger applicant, like a commercial property.
Correct.
Would have an engineer or a large development or something. But, you know, most are, as I like to say, maybe the mom and pops that don't have that. And so we try to guide them as best we can through the code enforcement office so they know what to provide and things like that. And it's what they can afford that meets the minimum requirements.
I know Mr. Panzer's pretty good. He helps the applicants when they don't have an attorney. He helps the applicants walk through the, what they're requesting. But a lot of times on their diagrams, you know, they, some of them just, they don't make any sense. So I just, any other question? Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have some remarkable committees and volunteers, and I want to thank all of them for all their hard work for the township. Next, we have on the agenda Treasurers Report.
Move for the approval, July 16th, 2024 Treasurers Report.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Bill's list?
I move for the approval of the July 16, 2024 Bill's List.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there any public comment at this time? Hearing none?
Move for a German.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.